David Heisler, incremental increase as full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents effective July first. Taylor Ecker, incremental increase telecommunicator in EMA to the rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents per hour effective June third. Daniel Corr, incremental increase telecommunicator in EMA to the rate of nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents per hour effective July first. And Brianna Spangler, incremental increase telecommunicator in EMA to the rate of nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents per hour effective July first.
Hold on a second. I have a motion in a second to approve all those salary board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? So moved.
Moving on to conference seminar request under mandated. We have a previously approved training that the date has changed and that training was with Daniel Steven Crawson, Ted Connolly, Carrie Wenzler, Tonya Kiff, and Mike Keener from Assessment for the South Central AAP Chapter Meeting in Gettysburg. Change from June first to June eighth. Meal and tools reimbursement, three credits mandated by the Department of State. Daniel Gray and Kim Shaw from MHIDEI would like to attend the Developing and Early Intervention Communications Plan and Effective Hearing Aid Use in Harrisburg. June twenty-sixth, mileage and meals reimbursement, four credits mandated by UPTO. Susan Christner from Probation Services would like to attend the SPEP Learning Community Meeting in State College. June seventh, meals reimbursement, five credits mandated by JCJC. Sally Barry and Audrey Vercau from Probation Services would like to attend the Motivational Interviewing Readiness Workshop in Port Matilda. June twentieth, six credits mandated by JCJC and PBPP. Scott Corr from Veteran Affairs would like to attend the Annual Accredited Training Conference in Erie, October first through October fifth, mandated by the DMBA.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the mandated conferences. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under requested, Michelle Wong from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the PDA 2018 Health and Wellness Conference in State College. June sixth and seventh, one hundred and eighty-four dollars lodging mileage parking and food reimbursement.
Move.
Second. Motion in a second for Michelle to attend the Aging Conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Diane Little from Clark and Courts would like to attend the 2018 PAPCC Conference in King of Prussia, June twenty-seventh, one hundred and twenty-five dollars total registration fee, mileage and tools reimbursement.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the Clark and Courts Conference requested. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Michelle Lambert and Michelle DiSario from MDJ Disinger's Office would like to attend the MDJS Workshop in Mechanicsburg, June twenty-first, mileage and tools reimbursement.
Move.
A motion in a second for requested conference for DJ Disinger's office. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Chris Hyble from MHIDEI would like to attend the Understanding Guardianship POA and End of Life Decisions in Mechanicsburg, June twenty-second, mileage, meals, tools, reimbursement.
Move to Mr. Schrum's request.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for requested conference for MHIDEI. Folks, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Daniel Gray from MHIDEI would like to attend the Excel Day Camp in Harrisburg, June twenty-fifth, mileage, meals, parking, and tools reimbursement.
Move.
Second. Motion in a second for Daniel Gray to attend requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Scott Corr from Veteran Affairs would like to attend the PA County Directors Conference in State College, June eighteen through June twenty-second, two hundred dollar total registration fee, lodging, mileage, and meals reimbursement.
Second.
A motion in a second for our new Veteran Affairs Director to attend requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, question or a question?
Actually.
Oh, Gordy, I'm sorry.
Michelle, Joe Krustback, was he hired today?
Yeah. I think he's already in the course.
That's a change.
Oh, Sheriff. Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, yeah, he just graduated the academy.
Okay.
So he.
All righty, now what position is?
He's casual part-time deputy sheriff.
Okay, part-time deputy sheriff.
Yeah, he's been with us since.
About six months.
Six.
About six months.
Yeah, he was active five months.
He just recently graduated from the Deputy Sheriff's Training Academy, the Nineteenth Act Corps of Penn State.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Come back. All right, introduce yourselves please for the folks in attendance and anyway proceed.
My name is James Dunware. I'm the Director of the County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse.
Dennis Good, fiscal officer.
Good morning. We're here for two purposes. The first one is to review and present to you our summary of contracts for 2018, 2019. I provided each commissioner with a copy of our contracts. Documents, nine, ten pages long. I just want to point out, first of all, that we have not added providers nor have we taken providers away from this list. So with that being said, this list is, as far as providers go, the same as it was for seventeen. I do want to point out to the commissioners and everyone in attendance that the only thing on this sheet that changed are rates. You can see in the first column, 2017, 2018, rates, what they are currently, and you can see right aside of that is the 2018, 2019 rates. And then the far right, you can see what that increase amounts to. What we did this year, and another thing to be aware of is, Lebanon County SCA, our office, is only responsible for setting rates for providers in Lebanon County. We do not control what other SCA, what other SCA's set rates for in other counties. We do use those providers based on what they set the rates at, as well as they use our providers in Lebanon County and use our rates. So with that being said, I want to make note of a few things, even though there weren't any additions or subtractions, I want to let the commissioners know that there was a 2.5% rate increase for all outpatient clinics, providers in Lebanon County, and that's to include the methanol clinic. And that is consistent with cost of living type increases and so forth. So I wanted to make you aware of that as well. The only exception to that is a provider by the name of J.D. Strife. Folks are familiar with him. He got a 5.1% increase this year because last year he was overlooked, to be quite honest with you. So he got the 2.5 plus I made up for last year excluding it. So I think he'll be happy to hear that I righted my wrong address. The other thing that of note in these summary of contracts, Crossroads, the inpatient facility out at the VA Hospital, they've been in existence since 2003. The cost of a bed out there since 2003 was one hundred and twelve dollars per day, which is extremely low if you look at the other bed costs at other places. So they got actually a 9.8% increase. A bed right now is 123. So it went from 112 to 123. I would suggest still that that is low, really low, as we look at other rates for beds across the state. And this has been their first ever increase. The reason I really did worry about the cost of their bed in the past was because we, our office, never did business with Crossroads. Now we do business with Crossroads in a sense, Crossroads used to be a 12-month program only for committed people. Now they have a short-term four-month program, which we are allowed to permit to refer people to that program. So we do utilize Crossroads, and I thought it's, you know, fair and reasonable to give them that kind of increase. And again, that is still far below the going rate. Some other notes I'd just like to point out, our previous providers, Compass Mark, there's no increase in their budget. It will be the same as it was last year. Our student assistance program providers, Empower the Mine, their contract will remain the same with no increase. And then finally, RACE, the RACE project, they are our buprenorphine, Suboxone provider, main source where we send people for that service. Their contract will remain the same as well. That is pretty much the update on this sheet. If there's any questions, if you'd like to.
Gordon had a question prior to the meeting on the lock sum.
Yeah, well, I wasn't really, really quite sure as to the morass of this because it's something I saw on the internet and hadn't had time to run it down. It seemed like it may have been, we'll have the source by the notes. Have there been any lots or any group groupings from USDA recalling the locks?
Not to my knowledge. I just, matter of fact, we're getting our inspection, yesterday and today, we're getting inspected by DDA, and that was one of the questions they asked me. We're still using and still supplying it. I mean, it indicate that there was any recall. Not to my knowledge.
It might have been spurious. Like I said, I just tossed it out in conversation prior to the meeting as a means of, has anybody else heard this?
No, I have not, but if I do hear it, I will reach out to you. In fact, I can mention that was true.
Do you need a question?
Yes.
Provide a question.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the 2018, 2019 provider contracts at the rates defined. How's that?
Thank you.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Okay, thank you. The second thing we're here for is to present a 2018, 2019 budget. This is not my specialty, but I met with Dennis, I mean, Dennis talked about this. Dennis is here today. That's specifics to what I'm going to present to you. Hopefully, I can present it to you in a clear fashion. If you look at the handout I provided, on page three of the handout, you will see a 2018, 2019 budget summary. If you look at the second column, 2017, 2018, which is our current budget, our budget for revenues was one million, two hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Our expenditures, expenditures, of course, was that same amount. In 2018, 2019, our revenue budget is projected to be one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. What I'd like to do is make you fully aware that that increase in revenues is primarily from the opiate epidemic funds that the state and federal governments providing to our office. So with the revenue going up in 2018, 19, the expenditures would go up as well to one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. What I'd like to do is make you fully aware that that increase in revenues is primarily from the opiate epidemic funds that the state and federal governments providing to our office. So with the revenue going up in 2018, 19, the expenditures would go up as well to one million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. What we will do with that money, it will be spent in five categories, administration, prevention, intervention, treatment, and case management. The biggest part of that money will go to treatment. And the reason that would go to treatment more so than the other categories is because the money's earmarked specifically for opiate, heroin users. So we have to, that funding stream has to be spent, that money has to be spent in a certain area. So with that in mind, our treatment budget this year was three hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. Next year, it will be five hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. That's a large sum of money that we got this year, and we exhausted and spent it on opiate use disorder folks, and we plan on doing that next year. One point I want to make is by getting that extra funds, those monies, we're spending less of DPW's money. And since we're a block grant county, and let me explain Department of Public Welfare, we get BHSI for about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we get Act 152 monies for about a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So 242,000 dollars of Department of Public Welfare money is part of our grant money. I was told, yesterday I talked to Jared, who's another fiscal person, and he told me it looks like we're going to have about eighty to ninety thousand dollars of that money left. Two previous years, since when we weren't a block grant county, we sent it back. So this year, we're going to be able to maintain those funds in the county, and I'm going to be able to, along with my partners, Kevin Schrum of MHIDEI, and Phyllis Holtry of Community Action Partnership, we're going to be able to disperse that money where needed as a group. So that is an absolute advantage to getting extra money, not spending a certain, that public, Department of Public Welfare money that we could utilize.
Was that 280,000, how much you said?
No, it's, the total amount that we get is 242,000, but we will probably have about eighty to ninety thousand dollars of that.
I can line the numbers.
Yeah, so it'll be roughly eighty or ninety thousand dollars.
Okay, well, thank goodness we're finally in that block grant program that's working out for us. That is, appreciate your efforts there. So do I have a motion to approve that budget?
Move.
Second, Michelle, thank you for the good work you're doing.
Dennis, thank you. I brought Dennis along not just for the pretty face. I don't know, he provided the summary that you guys then attached to what I just talked about.
Good work, Dennis.
It is all the fiscal that prepares it. I just get to talk.
There's nothing wrong with the pretty face either.
I just, I didn't want him to think he came there for no reason.
Why don't you stick around for Kevin?
For Kevin. Kevin will need you.
Before you go, Jim, I have some reappointments to the Drug and Alcohol Commission. May we vote on this motion first?
Oh, jeez.
I'm rushing, I'm sorry. Let me share this. I'm so sorry. But he was getting out. All right, I have a motion on the floor to approve the 2018, 19 budget as presented by Mr. Dunware, Mr. Good. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Now, I was going to remind you of the advisory board, but it's on the agenda. Yeah, I'm going to, sorry, I'll slow down here. Should have the clock behind me. There are two individuals who are seeking additional terms on the Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. They are Bonnie Loy and Marilyn Melty. They would be then serving until February nineteenth of 2021. Move to.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to make those two appointments to the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? There you go. And Tom Disler, his term has expired, I guess is not seeking to be reappointed.
His term has expired and we have not sought and.
Okay. We don't need to accept it. It's not a resignation. So you still have a few vacancies?
We currently have eleven people on our board, and we have a capacity for fifteen. Now, in end of August, I have another intern starting in our office in Lebanon County College. She will be part of that as the student representative for our board. And I plan on having a student representative, a student intern on that board from here on out. So whoever serves as the intern will serve on that board. So technically, we'll get twelve by the end of August, so we'll be three more.
And a follow-up to Gordon's question, there was a recall on the type four syringes, but that's not the type we use. I checked with Bob Dowd, he, down in EMA, they, I'm sorry, Department of Emergency Services, they're the distributor to the police and EMS for the county, so there was a recall, but not, not the type of device we use. Anything else? Or I just want to say this one's so much better than last year.
Really?
Oh, you know why. Want me to explain? No. It's different chairman.
That's his answer for everything. It's gotta be a correct, Mr. Veranda isn't here either.
Well, that helps.
Thanks, Gordy.
Actually, he was chairing me. I'm sorry.
Thank you. See ya.
We'll cut the tape there.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kevin.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
It's a beautiful day, central mentally.
Every day's a good day. The summer is better than the.
So if you want to introduce yourselves, Mr. Good, we already know.
Sure. My name is Kevin Schrum. I'm the administrator of Lebanon County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program.
Okay, you're ready to review our.
Okay, we have two agenda items today as we finish out our 2017, 2018 fiscal year and move into 2018, 2019. So today, we have our fiscal year 18, 19 provider contracts, providing this to them to you previously. We have several categories, mental health contracts, total one million, six hundred and two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And the intellectual disabilities contracts are broken down into non-waiver dollars and federal waiver dollars. The intellectual disabilities non-waiver dollars is eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-six. And the waiver dollars is twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-one. So the total IP dollars are eight seventy-six, seven seventeen. And then our early intervention dollars are eight hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And finally, we purchase support services for our equipment and so on, and that's forty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So the total of our contracts proposed for fiscal year 18, 19 is three million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Fortunately, we're maintaining our expenses within our existing funding streams, so if you're under contracts, we're not asking for additional county dollars to meet those contract needs.
Motion to approve the. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Commissioner Phillips has a question.
Just regarding the block grant, you used to hear from Jim Dunware that there may be some funds that'll be booked out for cabinet for you that would be excess of what they need. What happens if you don't have a place to spend those? Do they then go back, or will you find this a little place?
We can spend money. Because.
There's a lot of needs.
I mean, the easy part is, you know, the commissioners are providing what I call overmatch beyond, above, beyond what's required. So.
Gotcha.
So we can reduce that overmatch, or if we have additional costs that come in that were unanticipated, we can use it.
Yeah, or, I just took, I didn't understand the process there. Thank you.
And again, we'll work together as departments trying to identify the best use of money that can be shifted. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to.
We're excited about that. Good news is on. Any other questions before we vote on the motion? All right, the motion is to approve the 2018, 2019 provider contracts as outlined by Mr. Schrum. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you. Additionally, we have our budget summary for the same fiscal year, for fiscal year 2018, 19. Again, the good news is we are not asking for additional dollars from the county commissioners to support our budget. We can come in with the same request of county dollars as we did for fiscal year 2018. Even though our expenses do blow up, it has been some significant changes in that we are anticipating getting the chip dollars through reduction events at Los Angeles State Hospital. And additionally, we have reinvestment dollars coming in from Health Choices Program to support some of the expenses we have for 2019. So our total budget for, for fiscal year 18, 19 is, was proposed, would be seven million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget at the seven million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the 2018, 2019 budget for MHIDEI. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much.
And we have Advisory Council members to thank. Yeah, the MHIDE Advisory Board is recommending the employment of two new individuals as members of the board, Troy Williams, you all believe know as Executive Director of the Lebanon County Christian Ministries, as well is Reverend Dennis Galice, who is resident in Newtonstown, retired from Berks County Agency on Aging, served with the Homeless Coalition of Berks County, and currently a pastor at African Community Church. Would be filling a vacant position. Both of them would be serving terms that would go until December 31st, 2020.
Come to accept their names as.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to appoint those two new board members. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you very much, Dan. And as always, we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Dennis.
We appreciate all you do, folks.
Good stewardship. Thank you.
Looking forward to ice cream.
That's always a good thing.
Good morning, Gordon. Did you bring any support this morning?
No.
Faces alone?
Yeah.
Faces all alone? Good morning.
Good morning. Word from Bob Garns from Lebanon County Correctional Facility. Last November, Commissioners, I came before you proposing a pharmacy contract with Donald Pharmacy, owned and operated by Premier Pharmacies out of Marcus Hook, Pennsylvania. Since then, Donald Pharmacy has closed and, which makes our contract with them null and void, which prompted a search for a new pharmacy provider for inmate services as far as inmate medication, inmate dispensing. In the interim, I met with three interested parties, one being Wellspan Good Samaritan Hospital, the other one the Medicine Shop, one of their franchises located in Lebanon on Cumberland Street, and Hershey Care Pharmacies located in Hershey, Pennsylvania, owned and operated by Mr. Charles Cray. As a result of those meetings, as a result of negotiations, I'm proposing to the county commissioners that we enter into contract with Hershey Care Pharmacies for a number of reasons. Number one, it's a business that's been in operation for over forty years. Charles Cray is also the pharmacist and the CEO. He knows the area well. He also has contracts with other residential facilities within the county. He has a proven track record in dispensing services throughout the county. And the most interesting thing that I really was attracted to, and I'm sure you will be as well, he provides robotic technology that Donald Pharmacy had been offering. The only difference is Donald Pharmacy was going to lease the robotic technology to us, and Mr. Cray owns his own technology, so we will not be entering into any lease. The technology will be used without the expense of a lease to the county, which I found very, very attractive.
So we got lucky.
Yes, we got very lucky. So, you know, based upon, you know, these interviews and based upon previously the reasons I explained, going into contract with Donald, meaning. The only difference is Dono Pharmacy was going to lease the robotic technology to us. And Mr. Cray owns his own technology, so we will not be entering into any lease. The technology will be used without the expense of a lease to the county, which I found very attractive.
So we got lucky.
Yes, we got very lucky. So, you know, based upon, you know, these interviews and based upon previously the reasons I explained, going into contract with Dono, meaning liability to the county, accountability of medications, the technology that's being provided as far as, you know, prepackaged medication indicating the inmate's name, date of birth, et cetera, and being dispensed by our medical department instead of being poured by the medical department, recommending that we go into contract with Hershey Care Pharmacies. Now, to date, the solicitor has reviewed the contract and he has initially reviewed it. He'd like to take a look at it again, but he has intimated to me that there's something glaring. He was much more impressed with Hershey Care's contract as opposed to Premier's. He had spent significant time on that, but he sees no issues. But I'm requesting that the commissioners approve it pending the approval of the solicitor and that we move forward so we can provide this technology to the inmate population.
We move to approve the contract.
I'll second it. I do have one or two questions. I didn't get through the whole contract, so any other questions I have, I can give to the solicitor. But number one on this first page talks about the holder of the nursing facility license. And it's not a nursing facility. Does that need correction?
This is a sample, this is a sample contract. Anything that needs to be amended is going to be amended. This will not be the exact, this is an example of the contract.
I did not realize that. Okay. And then the equipment that they're going to be giving to the facility, I...
They're not going to be providing any equipment. They use it on-site, just as Dono did. Dono had the equipment that they were actually leasing and we would offset the lease, meaning the medication dispensing machine. There will be no, all the medications being delivered to the facility. It'll be prepackaged. It'll be packaged by the pharmacist and his approved assistants on-site at Hershey Care and delivered. There's going to be, we can itemize how much we want delivered. They'll do three, seven, 14 days. We're still in the operational phases of discussing. I'm actually recommending that we get a week's worth of medication because of just the inherent nature of prison environment and especially, but dispensing it to the inmate population. So we have it on-site. But, you know, anything that's packaged prior to actually issuing to the inmate, it's all heat sealed and it's done on-site at the pharmacy. Their technology is on-site. They own their technology. There will be no other, no other technology put in place at the prison only to assist the actual prescribing of the medication that they may want to put in place, but it'll be at their expense and not our expense.
The equipment that the lease refers to is carts and things of that nature.
Yeah, that would be provided by them. They're secure medication carts.
Is the equipment that's delivered to the site new or used? Because they're saying we're responsible for...
It'll be new.
It'll be new? Okay. All right. And then if someone dies, gets released, whatever, how, what is the process? Do they accept returns? Do we get credits?
Yeah, a lot of that will be itemized. Anything unused can be returned. That was one of the points that was negotiated with Dono and has been negotiated with Hershey Care. Anything that needs to be reimbursed as far as anything that's packaged in advance, if it's not dispensed, it can be returned.
Those are the questions I have today. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have the, I mean, the other advantage is that we don't have to have the inventory on our own dime?
Oh, well, yes. You know, we have a significant inventory right now and we buy a lot of medication in bulk through Form America. And a lot of that is not always being dispensed and obviously has a shelf life, so sometimes that isn't being used. So there's so many, there's so many advantages to going with a pharmacy contract. The money that will save in that regard, not to mention the liability and the percentage of error being greatly reduced to virtually nothing is the things that are the most attractive points to this contract.
And I think also the fact that the nurses are able to concentrate on what they need to be doing.
Absolutely. Yes, they spend four to six hours just pouring medication.
Right, and they're not really pharmacists, though.
Correct. They can do nursing duties.
That also, you brought up something else that's a good question. Non-expired medications, will Dono, not Dono, Hershey Care be able to utilize those for us? And how will we dispose of the expired?
Well, they will dispose of that for us, you know, through the proper channels.
Okay. And well, are they willing to use and credit us for any medications that we have already or...
That I don't know. That hasn't been discussed. If we've already paid for the medication, I don't think they'll...
They're not sealed or anything?
No, no. A lot of the medication they deal with is sealed. I mean, it certainly can be discussed, Commissioner. I'm not going to rule that's off the table and we can certainly bring that to attention. But the answer to your question right now is, I don't know.
This is, that'd be meant if they didn't acquire that we would...
That's correct.
Talking about what we have on hand.
Right, to use up our existing inventory that's not expired. I mean, it would seem like a waste maybe to throw them out. Even if he has to charge a handling fee, it should be cheaper than buying the medicine as well.
You can certainly explore it. I can certainly mention a quote.
All right, any other questions? Gordon, you have any questions before we go? All right, the motion is to accept the contract presented by Hershey Pharmacy.
Hershey Care?
Hershey Care and pending final review by our solicitor.
That's correct.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered, Gordon.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. You're right. Where's your cohort?
He is, has some well-deserved vacation time.
Oh, okay.
So he did have a looking on this. He put together the proposal and the budget. And said I should just explain to him the questions.
You come do the easy part, right?
Pardon?
You come do the easy part.
You got it. Okay. We have two items before the commissioners this morning.
You want to introduce yourself?
Oh, absolutely. I'm Betsy Bowman of the Lebanon County Redevelopment Authority. Two items to bring to the cushioners today. Previously, we had circulated to you a modification request for the CBG fiscal years of 2013 through 2014. It's really a housekeeping thing that we're doing now. We are, some projects that came in under budget, some came in over, some were canceled. So we're trying to reallocate those funds, keeping in mind that important things is timeliness and spending those months. So we're trying to clean up the old ones first. The most noteworthy thing about the budget modification would be that it created two new activities. One is a public service activity that would fund family health services for preventive reproductive healthcare to lower and find unserved or underinsured persons. And the second activity created would be a township to demolish a blighted property at 1405 East Cumberland Street. That is a property that had been flooded over the years. The owners of the property abandoned it and they went into foreclosure. And then the township acquired the property with their own funds and now asking for CBG funds to demolish it. That would be a second property that we demolished, but we would be demolishing for North Levene and that general area. And as you cross, as you're on the Allen Bridge heading east, when you look down, there's a very small A-frame property that's very blighted. And that's the one that they're requesting information to be funding. So those are the two major modifications. And as I said, it's just a lot of cleanup. We gave a couple existing programs like Volunteers in Medicine, about a few thousand dollars more just than... Are there any questions on any of the modifications that are being made?
Do I have a motion then to approve the budget modifications as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve, I believe it's $396,819.44.
I have a motion in a second to approve the budget modifications as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And Jay, do you have the resolution? Is it...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. And the second business item that I'd like to discuss would be an allocation to the Redevelopment Authority of your housing cost funds. Next April, I approached the commissioners and we funded $225,000 out of that fund to continue the access program, to begin a senior repair modification program, and also to fund an emergency assistance program to rehab properties. We also provided a small amount of money to the authority for operating expenses. This year, I would be, first of all, I think maybe we should look at what the fund analysis is, if you have those with you. That is an analysis due the end of April and you can see that you have at that time had all but 1.7 million in the fund. That, of course, was higher than what we looked at before because you had made those commitments to community homes and also to HDC and either of those agencies received tax credits, so that went back even more now. So there would be sufficient funds available if you seek to provide $200,000 this time. We did 31 properties with the money that we had from last year. We estimated we would do 225 of our 31 on par. And I would think that we would continue to do those numbers over the next year as well. We are not asking for emergency assistance funding because we still have about $25,000 from carryover from the last year allocation.
Just for the sake of everyone here, what kinds of things do you do under this program?
Okay. The access program provides, the goal of that is to keep a person in their home as long as possible by making modifications to the home. For example, walk-in showers, accessible toilets. We do ramps.
Wider doorways.
Right, stair rides, that type of improvement. And with the, with the senior repair program, typically what we've been doing are roofs, plumbing, heating, hot water heaters, those, and it's an electrical work as well. So it's really more the emergency, things that are very costly to that person. And what, we looked at our numbers again this morning and of the 31 people we assisted, over 40% of them are living in mobile home parks. And that's marking that we couldn't, we, previously, we couldn't touch those properties because any of our state or federal funding required the owner of the mobile home to also own land on which it was located. So with these programs, the funds that you're providing, we can get into those parks and assist some of those people who typically are very needy.
Do I have a motion before we...
No, go ahead. We're discussing.
Is, are we able to stipulate that these funds, when the grants are allocated, that the vendors that we would be using for this would be limited to Lebanon County? If there is, you know, eligible vendor in Lebanon, a taxpaying entity that's, I hate to go outside the county for these kind of projects. I mean, these are grants. Those are all jobs that you would think could be done by local vendors. Is there any way to stipulate that they have to be local or is that too...
It's probably a legal question. Can you do that? We, in some instances, you can assign a preference to local, to county businesses. But we don't have a ranking system where we could say, oh, you get five points if you're in Lebanon County. I don't know.
It just seems this is local money, local taxpayer money. That would be nice to say it's, that we're supporting our own taxpayers.
I would concur. Somehow the language could be included, preferred local vendors, as you suggested.
Yeah, we could probably do something like that and if none are available or similar price, then we can go out of the county. Sure, we could do that.
Any other questions or comments? I'm hearing none. I guess the motion is to move 200,000.
Utilizing preferred local vendors where possible.
You have a motion in a second to move those funds to the housing program as presented for seniors. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
May I clarify? That does include a preferred language I suggested.
You wanted that as part of...
Well, I didn't know, I, you were going to, you didn't know if it's legal to even have that in there, so...
You just indicated that she was going to do it.
In your presentation to these folks, that would be a preference, but I don't know. If she can find out it's legal, then I'm...
Right. And then what? We'll put it in the policy line as well. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you staying for the mayor's presentation?
Yes, I will.
Good. Well, it says mayor.
We just lost standing allocations that are waiting to see if they're... The two that we had out there have declined or didn't make it.
Oh, yeah, there are some others.
Yeah, community homes and...
Yeah, they were both determined at the same time.
Two years of the road dollars. Jim's got some third quarter invoices and a contract amendment and also that proclamation for child welfare professionals.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Jim.
Good morning. Mr. Hultrey, Director of Children and Youth Services, and I have a few items for you today for your approval. First would be our third quarter of invoices, the amount of $1,396,415 if you can have them sent through your approval.
I'll settle to a first.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the third quarter invoices as presented by Mr. Hultrey for children and youth. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. Second item is for the Lancaster County Commissioners for the detention facility and shelter facility for fiscal year 18-19. Those rates remain the same as the article this fiscal year. Detention is $305.35 per day. Shelter, $191.76 per day. And individual staffing is $75 per day. I would recommend that we approve that contract for Lancaster County Commissioners.
I will move.
Second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the contract with the Lancaster County Commissioners. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. And one final contract is for Abanko, which is our provider for our automated camp system. That rate is also the same for the next fiscal year than this fiscal year, the amount of $28,211.72.
I'll move to Mr. Abanko.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the contract as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. This week is Child Welfare Professional Week. And I understand you want to give a proclamation to city agency recognition of their services, so I'm going to kind of step aside and have some of those folks come forward.
You want to introduce me?
Sure, sure. So you want to inform now, it's Carmen Cortez, who's our intake investigator. Angelica Fressi, who is the child abuse investigator. Bob Suggal, who is our placement supervisor. Aaron Moyer is our program specialist, and Sharon Gassit is our child abuse supervisor. So if you folks want to come forward, I'll step back.
All right. Welcome to the county commissioners' meeting, folks, and we have a proclamation that Jamie's going to read and we're going to adopt, and then we'll give you an opportunity, if any of you want to say anything, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. Okay, Jamie?
All right. Whereas, the week of June 4th through the 8th, 2018, has been proclaimed as Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week, recognizing the efforts of child welfare professionals serving the children of Pennsylvania. And whereas, as commissioners of Lebanon County, we recognize the need to protect the children of this county who are at risk of such child abuse and neglect. And whereas, investigating child abuse and providing these services to families assure that the children of Lebanon County are provided with healthy nurturing care and support, and support, sorry. And whereas, professionals of children and youth must develop great skill in working with families who are in crisis situations, struggling with mental health challenges, suffering from drug and alcohol afflictions, poverty, and other difficult issues. And whereas, the staff of Lebanon County children and youth possess the qualities needed as they endeavor to protect these children. The staff also have a substantial knowledge in a myriad of areas to effectively serve the families of Lebanon County through long hours and tremendous demands. Now therefore, we, the commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby proclaim June 4th through the 8th, 2018, as Child Welfare Professional Appreciation Week in Lebanon County, and recognize our staff of children and youth for their dedicated efforts in protecting the children of Lebanon County.
I'll move to adopt.
Announce seconded that motion.
All right, we have a motion, motion and a second to adopt the proclamation honoring our folks that serve in children and youth. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The resolution, the proclamation is adopted, and we certainly want to thank you for the work that you do. Commissioners want to comment on?
No, but just to add to what you've said, as far as thanking you for what you do, I guess the toughest jobs that society has to offer, and you do it well, and we really appreciate your representing the county so well. Thank you.
And thank you for protecting children, they're our most precious resource. You have a very special job, and you're very special people. Thank you.
And would you folks like to, any of you would like to comment at all? Feel free to do that.
I guess on behalf of everybody, I will say thank you very much, and I appreciate being recognized for it. We love our jobs, we work very hard, and we're very thankful that you see that and have given us all the week, so.
Four weeks off, did you?
Yeah, that's what I heard, so.
So take you hear what you want to hear. I understand.
You want, guys want to go over on this side and do a quick photo? Jim, you can get in to it, I'll take a.
You thought this old man couldn't hear anymore. Well, I guess, first of all, who's going to receive the proclamation?
Bob.
All right. We don't want to block anyone out of the picture, Jamie's gonna take the picture. Keep a hand full. Get in here. You can leave a hole for me like that. Because you're the shortest one here.
She can see my head's right here.
You're asking me?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
We really do, we really do appreciate what you folks do.
Thank you.
Their involvement, as a foster parent. Appreciate your management.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you guys. All right. Thank you.
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 Can't believe that a year's gone by.
Hi.
How are you?
Good morning.
Patrick is here, I didn't think he was coming today. You're the second guy that surprises.
I found him on the highway.
Was he hitchhiking?
No, he's taking me out. Well, that was nice.
Well, welcome. I say, I can't believe, has it been a year since you've been here?
Little over.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Yes, if you would introduce yourselves, please, and then proceed with the report.
Absolutely, thank you. Again, I'm Pat Salmon from Honeywell.
I'm Bob Breslin, project manager for Honeywell.
I'm here this morning to discuss the positive results of our project. Jamie has, this is your measurement verification report you provide annually, and I boiled it down, and I just made a couple smaller pages than the potatoes of it, if you will. And it's all good news.
Instead of you being here, I'm gonna do this.
When I saw his name on the agenda, I was surprised, Jamie, so. Did you have him? Is this the first time you heard him?
No, I just, I got mine. That's just a couple pages, you have the full, and I have a copy of the full. Okay. So, to your point, Commissioner, from March 17th to February of this year is what this reflects, and it's basically a report card on the performance of our energy saving program with the county.
That was, this is phase two now.
Phase two, only phase two, correct. Only phase two. So what you, can I have one back, Jim, please? Because you have the abbreviated copies right on. Thank you very much. Excuse me there. If you go to the page 1.1, which again, this is all what's in here, I just took out the highlights, if you will, this has a lot more of the detail. The good news is, your cumulative savings to date, the guarantee was a million two per conversation, and we've saved a million four. So you're about 122% of the savings. And then, again, the report I gave you there on page 1.2, and again, it's the data that's contained in the big report, just to refresh you on what was done and where it was done. And then this also reflects the removal of Cedar Haven. Cedar Haven is taken out of here, and you can see that in detail in this section, where everything is noted for the Cedar Haven removal. And then if you go to page 2.1, that specifically speaks to year six we're in right now. The results for year six were 113%, which falls into the total 122. And then the page right below that will show you exactly where that 122 of savings came from. You see a little pie chart there, and it breaks out the savings for the energy conservation measures and the dollars associated with each one.
Water conservation is number one.
Lighting and water are your two biggies, and you're correct, Commissioner, water is number one.
We'll see.
Yes.
We saw Ward and Cornes out in the foyer, we spoke to him, he's very pleased with what's going on with their stuffs, but.
And if you take this to phase three, so this will be the compilation and documentation of phase two, so phase three, which is what we underwent up to this point, that project is, I'll call it 100% complete, booked at the correction facility and the remaining of the county buildings. What we're going through now is what I call the closeout phase, which is our own manuals, documentations, and tabs built. So we'll be handling that directly with JJ at the correction facility, and with Steve Klein for the remaining of the facilities. What I will also be doing is working with them, just to see if there's any warranty or issues that take place, I'll touch base with them monthly or every three months, as time is needed. And before the 12-month warranty is up, usually around month nine, month ten, I'll get back in touch with Steve and JJ, so. As you know, sometimes something happens two weeks after a 12-month, we'll try to talk about it prior to that, just to see if there's something that they can go around to an inspection.
Do you want, do you mind summarizing the main components of what phase three were, just as a reminder of the HVAC prison and so on provisions?
So if you talk to all the county buildings, plus the correction facility, 90% of that was all lighting. We changed it all to LED lighting. And over at the probation building that we went in and we upgraded and corrected, we can't afford shoes. So for the most part, that was that, and then with the lighting was interior and exterior. Over at the correction facility, that was lighting. There were some small areas that still needed water conservation measures, so now the facility is 100% controlled with water conservation measures. And we did a lot of upgrades to mechanical equipment that was outdated, not performing, before we tried to update it to the requirements. That corrected quite a few of the old areas.
And it went pretty well, I mean, we still pick ups, Bob and I are still friends.
Yes.
It'll pick up at the prison, and then the elevators here, all that's been corrected. If you go by the prison, that's, I think, the most obvious noticeable change. See, because at night, it's just really bright, you know, but it's downward bright, it's not a.
Yes, two things we had looking at at the prison were, one is what do we do for energy efficiencies, and that was changing to LED. But there was some, I'll call it, blind spot areas that they had some concerns with, with light, light, lighting levels, low lighting levels. So we understood that, listened to it, and we increased some of the lighting levels at different, different blind spots. But on the positive side, on the county side, working with Jamie and his crew at the correction facility, you guys assisted us to get things done, working with Steve and Ms. Perry, Sally, with her, she was grateful to work with us, also making sure we were able to get our team members in and out.
So a lot of what we accomplished, it's not only the energy savings, it's the primary driver of it, but we've been able to replace some capital equipment that was being deferred, honestly, until we could do it through the budget, and so being able to, rather than have to do it out of pocket, out of general fund, we're able to do it through this, and essentially covers the cost of the time, so.
Can you give examples, Jamie?
Probation is a perfect example in the prison. You know, the HVAC system at probation was shot, it was done, we were nursing that for the last three years. Thankfully, there were some parts available, we would have been able to do that, but, you know, we would have been faced with a general fund capital cost to replace that, but folding it into this project allowed it to get replaced, and all the ductwork issues and so on got remedied. And then at the prison, there were still some rooftop units there that were original to the construction of the building, so those are close to 40 years old, and it was time to replace. And so, you know, the savings that those are going to generate over time offset.
I think to piggyback with what Jamie indicates with the, with the prison is, keeping at a high level, simple understanding is, you have existing equipment up on the roof that also had pieces of equipment in board, like at the intake spaces, so there's two pieces, two pieces of equipment. If you had an emergency, if we didn't do the project that was planned, if you had an emergency, a piece of unit broke down, you're either replacing something at the top or something at the bottom. By doing it, the method that we did prior to everything, definitely breaking down, we were able to do it in the right manner. If we removed anything that was on the interior for maintenance, everything's up at the roof level now. So we were able to do proper planning, correct a lot of issues. You know, as everybody understands, on a correction facility, trying to get into spaces is not as easy as on a maintenance side, taking everything up at the roof level is where, is where you want to be. So I think with the right planning and rolling it into this project was a smart decision on the county side, rather than waiting to do capital dollars and having to do it on an emergency basis and not getting the best thing out of it.
Thanks to everyone who accomplished that goal, thank you.
Cuts both ways, I always say, Commissioner, the best projects work when you get the best cooperation, and we always do here, I mean, we always have over there. And Jamie said there's hiccups, there's always hiccups, it'd be naive to say there wouldn't be problems.
Now if we can figure out the windows.
Well, just keep them on the back porch, and we'll see that, absolutely. Absolutely.
It's always a phase 10, right? You never know when it comes in.
Phase 10, did you say?
Well, things change, the lighting, the lighting was current six years ago, and look what the LEDs did.
Yeah, the lighting moves rapidly, I mean, the technology in lighting moves very, very quickly.
Cost comes down, the ceiling's up, it's almost an old brain.
I'll keep Jamie and Dennis informed as you go through those jobs, and I'll stay in touch with JJ and Steve.
I also want to say thanks for doing the rebates, I mean, that's appreciated. When we do some of these changes, the utility companies offer rebates for installing this equipment, and we just have to say go, you know, and the Honeywell folks say, sign here, and the rebates are secured, so, yeah, so that's, there's no paperwork on our part, just really, we really appreciate it, so. And Emile does a nice job.
He's good, yeah, thank you, he's good, and thank you.
I still have questions, I guess.
You have a question?
It's good. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Have a good week.
It's always, it's always nice to get good news.
It's always nice to get picked up when you're hitchhiking, too.
That, too. Not used to be true.
That's true.
I have to retrain myself on how to pronounce Frank's last names, since he's back on the scene. Capitamumo, right?
Capitamuno. It's your measurement verification, guys.
Yeah, okay.
All right, have a good week, everyone.
Thank you.
We're glad to be here, glad to be invited, and thank you for your time. Thanks very much for.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, are you going to handle the introductions?
Yes. Do you want me to wait for Jamie, or?
We've been doing that all week. Yes, we have. He's saying goodbyes to the Honeywell people, I guess.
See you guys.
Thanks, sorry.
Well, I want to thank the commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to further explain an economic development tool that we would like to utilize in the city. We made our first presentation last year, and presented how light hurts communities in many ways. Light poses serious health and safety hazards, costs the city for enforcement and maintenance, reduces property values and tax revenue, and just makes us less attractive for investment in the city. And a land bank tool allows us to improve economic development and investment in our city. And I just want you to know that this is, this tool is not just a whim of the mayor. Over the past decade, the state has expanded the tools available to local government to fight light. And in addition, our own Grow Lebanon 2020 plan that was released in May of 2015, and all of you were actually a part of those focus groups and public meetings regarding its creation and implementation, and establishing a land bank was one of the action items from that plan. A land bank can address problem properties that need to be cleared of debt, that need to be maintained, we can make them available for private purchase so they can become productive properties again, because these properties are sitting there where the owner has really abandoned the property for the most part, taxes are not being paid, and we're not receiving revenue, and they're falling into a deteriorated state. Also, a land bank can help us with a weak or distressed market where. Yes, we have. He's saying goodbyes to the Honeywell people, I guess.
See you guys.
Thanks, sorry.
Well, I want to thank the commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to further explain an economic development tool that we would like to utilize in the city. We made our first presentation last year and presented how light hurts communities in many ways. Light poses serious health and safety hazards, costs the city for enforcement and maintenance, reduces property values and tax revenue, and just makes us less attractive for investment in the city. And a land bank tool allows us to improve economic development and investment in our city. And I just want you to know that this is, this tool is not just a whim of the mayor. Over the past decade, the state has expanded the tools available to local government to fight light. And in addition, our own Grow Levin and 2020 Plan that was released in May of 2015, and all of you were actually a part of those focus groups and public meetings regarding its creation and implementation, and establishing a land bank was one of the action items from that plan. A land bank can address problem properties that need to be cleared of debt, that need to be maintained. We can make them available for private purchase so they can become productive properties again, because these properties are sitting there where the owner has really abandoned the property for the most part, taxes are not being paid, and we're not receiving revenue, and they're falling into a deteriorated state. Also, a land bank can help us with a weak or distressed market, or manage that better, I guess you could say. So we want to create a housing stock that's stable, which will be a catalyst for economic development. So today, in order to assist with our presentation, we, the city hired a consultant, Chris Colato. Chris was the executive director of the Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authority for more than thirty years, and now he has his own consulting company. He's worked with numerous communities across the state, addressing blighted properties in general, and specifically helping to form land banks. And we thought it was pertinent and an absolute need to bring him on so that we would have his expertise and help with our presentation, because it's something that is extremely important to the city of Lebanon, and, you know, how we proceed with economic development and reinvestment in the city. And of course, Betsy Bowman, everyone knows Betsy, from the Lebanon County Redevelopment and Housing Authority. And I have two staff members, Melissa Moniz, who's the Director of Administration, and Janelle Mandal, who's our Community and Economic Development Officer. So, Chris?
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna distribute two handouts. I had sent these to the redevelopment authority last week, but they did not get to you, and I apologize for that. And if you have a copy of that, I'll give it to you. And I think the mayor did a very nice job in describing the rationale for a land bank, but, you know, I think that the proof is in the performance of land banks in Pennsylvania in terms of what they're accomplishing. And so I had prepared this last week to share with you some of the higher-performing land banks in Pennsylvania and what they're doing. And since you did not get this in advance, I'm gonna spend a few minutes just going through this. In Dolphin County, they have been successful in acquiring properties, a foreclosure property, and making that available to a first-time buyer. They've also acquired a blighted, a row of blighted properties and are in the process of beginning construction of infill housing in Susquehanna Township. Lackawanna County has been very active, and actually, Lackawanna County, at this point, the only participating community is the city of Scranton. They hope to attract additional communities. But in the city of Scranton, the land bank there has sold fifty properties from the county repository as side yards, side lots to adjoining property owners. And so they're having a lot of success, and they're looking at doing more of that and repurposing also some blighted properties for economic development purposes as well. In Lancaster County, the land bank there has acquired five properties in Columbia Borough. Two properties have been sold to a developer for rehabilitation. A third property has been sold to a community action program for renovation conjunction with a workforce development program. In Lawrence County, the land bank sold three properties in the city of Newcastle. They were on the county repository, they were sold properties, they were sold to a nonprofit that is rehabilitating those properties for sale to persons with disabilities. And I was out there last month and saw the good work they're doing, that organization. In addition to that, as a result of my technical assistance to that land bank and to the city, they're launching a side yard disposition program in Newcastle next month to acquire properties from the county repository for sale to adjoining property owners. And, you know, the idea again is to get these properties back on the tax rolls so they're generating taxes. And so you see both Lackawanna County and Lawrence County looking at those activities here in the early days of land banks. And by the way, we're still in the early days of land banks in Pennsylvania. While the legislation was passed in 2012, most of these have been formed in the last year or so, and so I think their work has been impressive today, given the fact that the vast majority of them have been operating for years or so. Schuco County, where I do extensive work, the land bank there was able to acquire a property from Wells Fargo Bank. That property was rehabilitated, sold to a modest-income buyer. Five properties have been acquired by that land bank at the judicial sales last year and this year. Two properties in the process of being rehabilitated and sold to first-time buyers. One property in Minersville Borough has been demolished and is being redeveloped for mixed-use development. One property has been acquired and demolished for new townhome development in Shenandoah. And then one property has been acquired and has been included in a master plan for redevelopment of the entire block in Crackville. And finally, Western Worland County, and I worked with them back in 2013. Dolphin County was the first to approve a land bank, and Western Worland was the second in 2013. They acquired ninety-one properties. Today, fifty-five properties have been sold, generating twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars in new tax revenue. And another four properties have been rehabilitated for first-time buyers. So they are doing good work, as the mayor indicated. What they're doing, by and large, is really creating an environment for private investment. And by that, I mean, I don't think that's necessarily limited to private developers or economic developers. What is happening is, and you see this in parts of Schuco County, when blighted properties are rehabilitated, you see property owners, residents in that area, beginning to invest in their neighborhood with improvements. And so when I talk about encouraging or setting the table for private investments, not just developers, but private individuals who own property, residents, owner-occupied residents in neighborhoods that are benefiting from this program, and now beginning to see the logic, if you will, and beginning to put money in their property to improve their property. So this is a program that has, is making a difference in Pennsylvania. There were some proposed changes, Mayor, I don't know if you want to go through these, I can certainly go through the changes in the Anadarko Mountain, that I think are designed, in honesty, to give you more control of this process. The first is the fact that the land bank will submit a list of properties it's interested, the city land bank will provide you with a list of properties it's interested in acquiring at the judicial sale, along with a write-up of each property, and that's this page, this is what I use for the tax man here on Schuco County, when we look to acquire properties at the judicial sale. So you would not only have a property address, but basically a profile, not of just the property, but the other property. Because if I'm in your shoes, I want to know a little bit for background on that ownership, and be satisfied that you're not displacing anyone, particularly someone of a high income. And by the way, by and large, the vast majority of properties, to my knowledge, all the properties that are acquired by land banks in Pennsylvania are vacant properties and not occupied by owner-occupants that have failed to pay their taxes. But just to give you assurances and to give you control of this process, you'll see language now under paragraph two, basically providing that you have that opportunity to strike, if you will, any properties that the land bank would like to acquire at a judicial sale. The other thing that has been added to this agreement is language that provides you with details of a subsequent buyer prequalification program. I think one of the things the land bank does not want to do is get in the way of the good work that the private sector does in terms of redeveloping properties. Having said that, there may be some advantage to having land bank acquire properties that developers have an interest in, because then those developers would have to bid against speculators at the judicial sale. And so what you see in that prequalification program is an effort to really partner with private developers, have those developers share information about their interest in the particular property, and then essentially make sure they're vetted by the land bank, that they're in good standing with all taxing jurisdictions, the county, school district, and city. And if they are, then have an understanding between the land bank and the particular party that would like to acquire the property at the judicial sale, that the land bank would be willing to sell that property after the judicial sale. So this is a good way that land banks can partner with the private sector so that speculators are kept out of this process. So those are the two changes. There is some language also under paragraph three that provides that the county has ten business days to review that list of properties that the land bank proposes to acquire at the judicial sale, and essentially you would be able to strike any properties from that list. So this is, I think, a good compromise, if you will, in the sense that it does give the county control of this process, certainly should give you a comfort level that what the land bank is doing is consistent with notions of fairness and justice.
I do have comments, if they're in order. I'd just like to start by saying, there are going to be issues on which we disagree, and I hope to do that respectfully. I do have a list of concerns that I'd like to share. Right now, we already have something to address light called the First-Time Homebuyer and the Vacant Property Reinvestment Board to address light. Number two, cities like St. Louis and Philadelphia have become the major landowners in their communities. They own twenty-five percent of all properties and spend tens of thousands of dollars annually on upkeep. Number three, in this proposal, historic structures are not addressed. Number four, hazardous sites, including lead and underground storage tanks, not just for commercial, but also for residential units, are not addressed. All properties need an environmental assessment if a government agency is going to take them over, in my opinion. Number five, tax burden to county taxpayers. Even after land banks' properties are sold, according to this contract that you would like us to pass, the county would be billed fifty percent of collected taxes for an additional five years. That's a tax shift to the taxpayers of the rest of the county. Municipalities are land-strapped and can file for bankruptcy. So if we do this for the city of Lebanon, we have already been approached by a similar program from Myers Town, and I hear people in Palmyra who have concerns as well. And this is a part that may sound hard, but when I read it, it is my interpretation of what I read. Adding the clause for county approval means the city transfers the blame for eminent domain to the county. Eminent domain at least reimburses owners the assessed value of the property. Land banks do not pay homeowners anything. It's a true taking that is worse than eminent domain. Some of the articles that I read said that part of the problem is issuing demolition permits and other permits in a timely manner. I have not heard that that has been addressed. Therefore, that is something that I'd like to know more about. Continued use of public services by the properties even after they're sold for that five-year period doesn't seem fair to eliminate, or fifty percent of taxes. They're still utilizing fire, police, public schools, et cetera. I believe that this simply creates a middleman, and in many instances, right now, banks donate properties to Habitat for Humanity for rehab, and now they would have to go through a third level. That doesn't seem fair. Those are my comments, having read through your proposal, and I think they're fairly consistent from the first time this was brought forward, with some additional comments based on the language changes. So thank you for listening.
Would you like me to respond?
It's your call.
You want a tag team?
Sure, why don't you get started?
Okay. So I tried to catch all of them as best as I could. So the First-Time Homebuyers Program and the rehab, I'm not sure the exact name that you used. Yes, the city and the county has a First-Time Homebuyers Program. Usually those properties are already ready for someone to go through the classes, and they buy a property that's, you know, recently been renovated, or maybe needs some minor rehabilitation. It's not a property that has sat for a long period of time, that's vacant, that has deteriorated to the point where it really shouldn't be occupied or can't be occupied. So those are totally different programs. Those are good programs, and of course, we use those because our goal is to have more owner-occupied properties, but it's completely separate from what we're trying to accomplish here. We're trying to address blighted properties. As to the point of owning, municipality owning, and I don't know which municipality you indicated, over twenty-five percent of properties in their borders, that is not the goal of this land bank. We don't have that much money to acquire that many properties. We're talking about, you know, a couple properties over a couple year period, you know, year period of time.
But I see that as, if they can't get sold, those properties continue to accumulate, and over the years that they've been in effect, that's where they're growing to twenty-five percent.
If you look at the bylaws of our land bank, you know, that is not our goal. Our goal is to turn them over as soon as possible, because we will not, we want to use our money, get the most bang for our buck. So we're not going to just keep acquiring properties. We're taking one at a time, for the most part, and addressing them, and, you know, maybe two at a time. But it's not going to be that, we can't afford it, and it's not in our bylaws to do that. Of course, we'll know about the hazardous materials, because the city is involved with the properties, and we know if they've been condemned or not, we'll know what situations are there. And of course, we're going to follow all local laws and higher laws. We would hope that more municipalities would want to do this, because, again, you're not receiving tax revenue now, and this is a way to return the property to productive use, because bottom line, no legitimate investor wants these properties, because it's going to cost more to rehabilitate them than what the market value of the property is. And that's why we need to come up with another plan. How can we make them productive pieces of property? We have some, you know, people who think they're investors that buy these properties, and they put nothing into them, and they sit there, or they do the bare minimum, and that's not our goal, is to make them productive, to rehabilitate them and get owner-occupied people in there. And that's one of the items in our bylaws as well, that they would become owner-occupied houses and not renter, because a lot of these investors come in and they make them into rental units. And that's not our goal. And we definitely are working with Habitat. We're working with Habitat right now on some properties that were destroyed by fire. Our goal is always to make Habitat our priority, and if a bank wants to donate a property to Habitat, they can do that without being involved in this process. And I think that addresses most of them. In a nutshell, very quickly, I apologize.
Yeah, and let me just pick up on some of the mayor's comments. I will be brief, because I think she covered most of the issues. The sharing of taxes, though, and the thought that this is somehow coming into the realm of the taxing authorities, you know, I would argue that, again, you're only sharing taxes with the land bank to the extent that they have succeeded in putting that property back on the tax rolls. So you weren't getting anything prior to that, and now you're going to get half a loaf for five years. So it's truly a win-win situation, I think, for the taxing authorities as well as the land bank. And keep in mind, the land bank doesn't get paid, and I think this addresses Commissioner Litz's point. Land bank doesn't get paid through that tax-sharing mechanism until it succeeds in moving that property out of its portfolio. And because of the way this land bank is funded, it has to move those properties in order to succeed financially. Unlike the city of Philadelphia, and I can't speak to St. Louis, because that's different enabling legislation, but to the extent that Philadelphia's capitalized their land bank with, you know, millions of dollars, there's no incentive for them to move those properties out. This land bank, that's their source of revenue, is the sale of these properties. So in order to succeed, it has to move those properties. And candidly, why wouldn't it want to do that? I mean, its mission is to see these properties repurposed. But finally, on the point about maybe this being a de facto eminent domain action, it's not that, because owners have the right to redeem the property up until the judicial sale. This isn't taking a property, the owner has the right to redeem the property, pay the taxes up until that point. Property's only going up for judicial sale, which, by the way, is allowed under state law, as you know, when the owner hasn't paid the property. And so, you know, I respectfully disagree that it's even the fact that in a domain, because, again, I don't think the owner in this case has lived up to their obligations as a good citizen, they haven't played by the rules. So I think, you know, those would be my comments.
I'd like to counter one or two of those points, if I may. Sure. On the county, not the county, the state website, I printed off, and it specifically says, "A land bank is a government or nonprofit entity created to acquire abandoned property through donation, foreclosure, and eminent domain, to hold the property and when possible," et cetera. So it says it right on the state website. So it says it right on the state website that it is eminent domain.
And what website is that that you read?
The state's website.
Okay.
I had provided a copy previously. And also, a lot of the information I got actually was appearing in the July 2, 2017 Lebanon Daily News on page 3A. So there's a lot of information there that I gleaned initially.
Well, Commissioner, again, with all due respect, that is just plain wrong. You have the land bank law in Section 2108, says that land banks do not possess the power of eminent domain. So whoever developed that information on the website is just wrong.
Ready to move on the modified land bank plan as presented.
Motion.
Yep.
I prefer not to, thank you.
I am going to second the motion, and I'm going to speak a little bit to what has transpired and somewhat in response to Commissioner Litz's position on this. I would first of all like to congratulate the mayor and her staff, and Betsy and the redevelopment authority folks for listening to me and some of the concerns that I had with this because I feel not, perhaps not 100% of what I would have liked, but at least you listened, and you made modifications to the plan, and you responded to one of the things that I understood Commissioner Litz would have liked, but now she doesn't like it, and that is to give the county commissioners more involvement and more control of the process. So I thank you for accommodating at least me and my concerns there. And Betsy, would you like to comment on the resource guide that we put together now?
Sure. We provided you with a draft copy of the Tax Foreclosure Resource Guide. It's still a little bit of work to do on, but our thinking was that this would be distributed when first notice goes out, and maybe Sally can help me on that one, but when the first notice goes out prior to the upset sale, that this would be something that could be included in that, possibly to assist these people coming up with someone to pay their taxes. But we would also want this to be available and distributed to other agencies that exist like the Land Bank or just anywhere, but we can get this information out. And yeah, if it's not in final form, there may be some opportunities that we should be adding to this, but I at least want to get you as much as we had at this point, that we would be distributing that as well.
I commend you for your efforts on that. Because it was only lame here a few minutes ago, I didn't have a chance to read through the whole document, so I can provide feedback one later.
Sure.
So to sum up and not to belabor the length of this meeting because it's already a long meeting, but again, I feel that you have both the city and their consultant and redevelopment authority has accommodated and responded to some of my concerns in a serious manner, and sometimes you do chug into a person's mind because in this case, and I, it's one of the things that I'm proud of. I can be persuaded, I just want the facts, or I want something that is going to better serve the people of Lebanon County. And I think the changes that we've worked together to create here are going to serve the people of Lebanon County in a better way and make it just, just the fact that this board, whoever are the commissioners at that time, there'll be six more eyes looking at this process and whether or not we're being totally fair in what we're doing here. So with that said, I will second the motion. And is there any further discussion on the motion to adopt the land bank as presented by the city of Lebanon?
You indulge me for just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Your motion, just to enter into this, the agreement that's been presented to you with the changes they made, you know, highlighted and so on, I would recommend just a little bit of tweaking to the one, to the paragraph that talks about the 10 business days to review and so on and so forth. My question is, are you approving it as written, or is there an opportunity to still make a couple of those wording changes?
Well, of course, it's their document, but if we can agree...
I'd have the solicitor review it.
Well, agreed, right. Just with respect to the county being able to have 10 days to review the list, strike any and all, and so on.
The purpose is because we don't have a lot of time, and when the list comes out, it goes up on sale.
Right. But it's only going to be once a year, a judicial sale, right? Okay. So what I think would be probably the best approach would be if they were to review it, discuss it in open meeting, and formally adopt that list to be presented or to be forwarded on. Sometimes, sometimes we don't have 10 days between meetings, so could it be worded maybe in such a way that 10 business days or the first commissioners, or the next available commissioners' meeting, whichever comes first? I mean, it's not to drag the process out, it's just to make sure we can, we can still have enough time to do that.
I'll let the mayor respond, but I think you've got to nod ahead from her, yes.
And then, and then also maybe some recognition that there will be a formal adoption or formally, that would be, those would be my suggestions.
You and I talked about that yesterday. I thought you forwarded that information.
Right, but I just think that would...
We could do that.
That would solidify the process.
We would do a list. Now, at the time that it gets closer to the sale, when we would start, the list may be shorter because some properties may have come off, but we can, we can do that. We can rework that.
And we actually would require board action to approve the list or modify the list and approve it.
So what you were probably talking about over there, how far in advance is the list published?
Well, I mean, your first initial list comes out in August for the September sale. Of course, that's a lot bigger.
Right.
So those same properties, though, will be carried forward to judicial sale if they're not sold or paid at upset.
And then that's published, how far in advance of the actual sale?
Well, that'll be on our website once we finish up the upset sale and we have the orders from the judges and stuff, and the judicial sale set.
So weeks ahead?
Yeah, I think it would be some weeks, you know.
Okay.
The major part of it is to get it approved and the date set by the judge, but we still know what homes basically should be on it unless they're paid or...
And then my second is just a comment, and Melissa and I spoke briefly about this. The land bank itself, the governing board of the land bank will be, its liability is covered under the city's liability because it's a city land bank. And I brought that up because, because of these other counties, for example, Doffin, Scoopville, Lawrence, Westmore, and I think they're all in the same insurance pool that we belong to, and so the question has come up, and there have been inquiries made to counties, do you have a land bank? And, you know, if it's a county land bank, then the errors and omissions and so on fall to the county, but this one's going to be, this is a city land bank, so this one's yours. Just wanted to clarify.
By the way, there are city land banks. There's about 17 land banks in Pennsylvania. I would say about 2/30 are county land banks, but there are 70.
And the question about liability, you can run that by the solicitor.
Yeah, in essence, if, you know, for example, if the, if the land bank were somehow, if they were sued, named in a suit or something, who would provide that defense? In this case, it would be the city's insurance policy that would defend any sort of blame on it.
All right. So do we want to take action? Do we want to vote on this motion? Can we tweak it to the fact, the point where it's votable?
Well, I think, what I'm hearing is just the 10-day and allowing, you're agreeable to that, so maybe that you can...
And the solicitor's review.
Yeah, you can approve it pending those changes and the solicitor's review, and then...
Are you making the motion?
No, no, not. You already have a motion on the floor. I'm just saying that the solicitor should be reviewing the contract.
We do that with everything, so...
It should be on the record that it's subject to...
Well, you put it on record, Dan. Thank you. Okay, let's... All right. And make sure that we have the solicitor's review on record. All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries to one.
Thank you.
Betsy, thanks for your reference.
Thank you, and I had some help from the city as well.
And thank Dan, too. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. It'll take 60 seconds of your time. I'll get your text to the camera.
All right, introduce yourselves, gentlemen, and proceed.
I am Bob Dowd, Director of the Department of Emergency Services. Gary Burnath, Chief of the Lebanon County Hazmat. We have two things for you to order. First is to accept a grant award in the amount of $7,126. It's a hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant, and it's used for string...
I'll still move to approve the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant in the amount of $7,826. 100?
126.
Okay. I thought I heard eight.
Second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to accept the hazardous materials grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? So ordered.
Second, I don't... Gary. I am seeking permission to apply for the Plains LPG First Responder Grant Program. I'm asking for, to go for the amount of $1,520, as you could replace a confined space rescue tripod, and also purchase four new harnesses, rope rescue harnesses for the confined space rescue. Plains gives grants out to first responder companies that directly impact Plains LPG facilities, and also that would help in case of a pipeline incident. Plains, they're far down in Shakers Town, does have some confined space areas as well as many other businesses and industries in our county, so I think that would help.
Second.
A motion and a second to grant permission to apply for that, grant permission to apply for that grant. How's that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? So ordered. Yes. Was your apparatus used in the annual rescue?
There was some of our apparatus, yes. It was kind of all mixed together with other companies' apparatus. We were there, we were called for that pretty quickly, once they found out what it was, and every single company that was there worked wonderfully together.
No, I understand that, but with the actual tripod, was that yours or...
No, what we did there is, our tripod wasn't used. What we used, we felt it safer to use the bucket from Tower One, which is Palmyra, and we set up a rating system off the bottom of the bucket. They fought ahead way back when they built that truck to have the rating points on the bottom of the bucket, so...
And again, the information on the recall, the lockset came from BMA, and that's not anything we used. It's a syringe, there was some foreign matter, I guess, they found in some of the devices of the recall. Jim, Don Meyer, he contacted me, got back to the office, and it was in his email inbox, I guess, at more than 10:00, so you were pretty on the ball there, according to that recall information.
I was lacking details, so...
That particular type of new Arcan is used by the ALS services in the county, so I'm sure they're aware of it.
But we don't, it's not something we pass through?
No, we, we have that in how we ever take Arcans, you know, it's raised in the...
Let Brian Smith call. Okay, anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you again for your grand efforts and good job you did.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Is Zach here? First, we have a bid.
Yes, sir.
Jump too fast here. First, I have a bid for sale of a property from the Tax Claim Bureau repository. This is a property located in 11 Sebastian Lane, Lebanon. This was offered at upset sale in September of 2017 for $3,882, did not sell, was offered again at upset judicial sale, $8,842 in December, did not sell, and so we have a bid from Susan Walborn of State Route 72, Jonestown, for $1 for the property. Do you accept?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the $1 bid for the property in question. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Guess that's not eminent domain.
I have an exemption request for a disabled veteran for property taxes. This is Michael W. Sadizen of Blue Moon Road, Fredericksburg, meets all of the requirements and certified for the exemption.
I move to exempt Michael Sadizen from local real estate taxes.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to exempt the disabled veteran. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? So ordered.
I had a reappointment for Lauren Holubek to the South Central PA Works Board representing Lebanon County. She's a current member, and Brenda Stone, the administrator at SCPA Works, notified us that they are recommending her reappointment to June 30, 2021. Sue.
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Ms. Holubek to the PA Works Board. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? So ordered.
Next, I have an agreement for MATP, or Medical Assistance Transportation Program, driver for Maximo Almonte. Add to the list of drivers available.
Same rates.
Same rates.
I'll move to appoint Maximo, not Almonte.
Almonte, there you go.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to add that to driver contract. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? So ordered.
Liquid fuels application for county aid, this would be for South Anvil Township. They intend to do pavement overlay and leveling course from Bricker, I'm sorry, on Bricker Road, from Spruce to the township line, on Brandt from the township line to Louser, Hinkle to the, Hinkle from the township line to Brandt, Fontana Avenue from 322 for 2,500 feet, and their total project cost is $464,050, and their allocation from the county fixed allocation will be $2,850.
Let me tell you, it's beautiful. They already have a lot of it done. It is nice. Do I have a motion to approve that liquid fuels grant to South Anvil?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the liquid fuels grant to South Anvil Township. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? So ordered.
Next, I submitted to you the Pennsylvania County Risk Pool Loss Prevention Grant Program application for a grant of $20,000 from our insurance liability and general property carrier. And as you're aware, they provide each year grants toward reducing risk and all sorts of projects that we might identify, or a single project we might identify. The history of this is they used to, it used to be $15,000 with a 50% match, and then it went to no match, and now it's gone to $20,000 with no match, because it's really been a successful program. So I've provided with, to you, the list of items. Over the course of a year, our safety committee at each meeting discusses this grant, and are there any new suggestions, any ideas, anything that might come out of a loss or an incident that we might be able to approve with this grant? And then toward the April-May period, we go over these, prioritize them, get quotes on them and so on, and then recommend them to you. So there's nine items here, as I've listed, total project costs of... Total project costs of them are twenty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and we're, so we hope to submit for twenty thousand dollars of those. Uh, the first, number one, the MPJ Office's lock boxes for weapons, that's an A O P C initiative requirement that they've been.
You're going to go over the mine? I'll be right back.
Oh, I don't have to go over?
No.
Okay. Um, then the second item, first aid kits for county offices was just an idea that came up actually at the safety committee meeting to just have some kind of first aid. Uh, if it's serious, you know, somebody from emergency services will respond and obviously ambulance is called. Sometimes it's just a, a minor injury that maybe just takes a bandage or a Band-Aid or an ice pack or something like that, so we'd be able to equip each office with those. Some panic buttons in juvenile probation, there are a few areas there where they're, they're lacking them in their isolated offices that they might not be able to get in touch with someone if they're, you know, restraining individuals, so they have panic buttons. Additional A E E, A E D at juvenile probation, some broken curb that are tripping, that's a tripping hazard.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
On number four, that's the only one I really had a question with.
Okay.
Um, some of the ones that we have came from the American Red Cross. Is that program no longer available where they provide them?
Um, I don't think so. Uh, was it the Red Cross or was it, um, there was a program that was granting them, but we're not aware of those. I mean, that's, that really, the evolution of A E Ds is that anybody that really wants to put one, there's so many of them anymore that people are just going out and acquiring.
Okay, I just thought maybe a phone call to the American Red Cross to see if they still have that program. If not, then, I mean, I'm fine with it, it's a good idea, but.
Yeah, they've become almost so commonplace that there really aren't any grant programs for them anymore that they've been so successful in acquiring them. In this case, acquiring additional, so I could find out.
Well, just a thought.
Broken curb being a tripping hazard. Courthouse entrance maps, uh, mats, as you know, we've got these all over the place. Uh, a heavy rain event or a snow event, they get saturated, this would give maintenance the ability to literally swap them out, put a drive in, replace them, whoever. Uh, M H I D has a little gap in their outdoor lighting they'd like to fill. Um, you might have, you may have all noticed the rotary broom that's used here at the courthouse now that you've purchased, uh, for maintenance as an attachment to their tractor a couple of years ago. That has just really performed well and it allows them to get around much faster. Uh, they use them for most snows except for the heaviest wet snow and even wet snow, if they keep after it, they can, you know, so the clearing happens more frequently, more thoroughly and so on. Uh, here at the building, we'd like to add one to the, to the, uh, utility tractor that the prison detail crew uses because they do the other properties and they'll speed up their cleanup too, so I think that's a great add. Uh, and then, uh, need extra partnership is one of our last remaining abilities to add some hard access to. So those are the items for twenty thousand dollars.
I sub move to, um, support the twenty thousand dollar grant program from.
Second. I have a motion in a second to accept the P Corp grant and apply it as indicated on the report, uh, by the safety committee. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. The next two items I have are, are tourism grant applications. Uh, the first one I have, these are, these were both submitted a few weeks ago and you've had a chance to look over them. First one is from Trailway Sports Club Incorporated. They are based in Hanover and they are, um, they have booked a show at the Expo Center, a drag racing show for, I think, uh, next winter, uh, January timeframe, next winter. And they are requesting, um, fifty-five hundred dollars in tourism funds to expand their marketing and advertising campaign toward this show. Um, they typically, and they, they provide a lot of data to you on, on how wide it is that they feel their audience comes from and they'd like to supplement that with some additional advertising. Their total advertising budget is seventy-five thousand dollars and they would, uh, they feel they can boost tourism, obviously, by, uh, an addition of fifty-five hundred dollars to that, for that effort. And this is the same group that puts on Motorama, which you might have heard of there, often at the farm show, they've been up there for a couple of decades now, very successful show up there. Pat Gerwin was able to, uh, I guess, uh, do a good job persuading the expo, we have the locations for one of their shows too. I think they've located at York previously. They're now branching out.
When we got this application, I, uh, made it a point to, uh, discuss it with, uh, Pat Gerwin and also with, uh, Jennifer Cuzzo at the Visit Lebanon Valley. And they felt, both felt it's a, a worthy, uh, thing to, uh, to grant them the fifty-five hundred dollars. Uh, and it's a good event for the Expo Center, which we, we already know that thirty percent of our hotel stays are generated by the Expo Center, so I'll accept the motion if we can.
I'll make a motion, but I have a question.
I'll second the motion, but I'm not convinced on this one.
Okay. Just my only question is, are we setting any precedent by supporting some outside entity? Or since usually these are from, you know, the homegrown.
Agree.
Yep. Uh, no, you've already passed, there was.
We, we granted a thousand dollars to a, uh, a soccer organization that came here for a soccer tournament and.
Facility, uh, three twenty-two there, uh, that, that large, uh, indoor facility, that was out of that.
I don't know that I was aware that it was not local, as if it was a.
Well, it's, well, the event's local though.
Yeah, the event's local and it benefits the, the Expo Center.
I don't specifically remember that company.
And the, and the goal was to bring people to Lebanon County, so because the sponsoring agent is outside, I, I don't suppose the Expo Center would turn down, uh, organizations that would come here to throw on shows.
No, I agree. I'm just looking at local.
Any?
Helping local, uh, organizations and.
Okay, well, we do have a motion in a second. Gordy?
Do you have any thoughts of perception of how, even though you did it once before for a soccer thing, essentially the way people are going to hear it is that a York County group was given fifty-five hundred dollars to advertise its drag racing at, at the Expo Center?
It's a drag, it's not really a drag racing, it's a drag racing event. No, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I personally, uh, don't have a problem with it because I think the responsibility that we have with that money is to bring tourism to Lebanon County. So, uh, we're, you know, I think we're, we're going to have difficulty doing that by not dealing with agencies outside of Lebanon County.
Essentially where the money comes from anyway is people coming from outside.
Exactly.
Staying.
Yeah, through room stays.
Yep.
It's not local tax money at all, but, you know, we'll vote on it and if we have to take the heat, I guess we have to take the heat. All right, any other comments before we do? All right, we have a motion to grant fifty-five hundred dollars to, what is the name of the company?
Oh, it's, uh, Trailways Sports Club.
Sports Club. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. 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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries two to one.
Then the second one, uh, I have is from, uh, the Friends of Coleman Memorial Park and Music in the Park. Uh, they are requesting twenty-six thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. And there was a, a summary of it, but essentially they're, um, they're replacing the doors, um, let's see, on the amphitheater and they're cumbersome and to open and close malfunction regularly can only be operated by one or two people. This is the reason the venue cannot be promoting to other groups or used regularly, like, like groups in Lebanon County, so they have thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar quote to replace those doors and, um, are asking for twenty-six thousand two hundred and twelve of that.
I'll make a motion, um, to approve the grant if it's being opened up for other groups to also utilize the amphitheater, which is what I am hearing, is that correct?
Uh, what, they're, they're saying that they can, this is the reason the venue cannot be promoted to other groups or used regularly by groups in Lebanon County. So I think that's what they're trying to do, yeah.
So you're making a motion for the full now? Do I have a second for that? Do you have one?
I'd like to, that we do ten, the maximum of ten thousand.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Uh, my motion's still on the floor.
Okay, would you, would you withdraw your motion?
There's no second, so. As for lack of a second.
Well, unless you want to.
There's no motion on the floor until there's a second.
Commissioner Ames could theoretically second it?
I'm sorry?
That's true. I choose not to second it, so.
So that motion?
That motion.
That motion dies for lack of a second.
All right, now you can make a motion.
We looked at, we allowed the maximum of ten thousand dollars for this particular request.
I'll second the motion. I have no objection to giving them ten. I would have liked to help them out completely.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, give a grant of ten thousand dollars to Coleman Park for the, some of the sliding doors on the amphitheater. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Okay. And, uh, lastly, I have, uh, a couple of weeks ago, you know, recalling that approved an agreement between the county and Phil Haven for their redevelopment assistance capital program that was a few years back and so on. More recently, uh, Good Samaritan, Wellspan Good Samaritan applied for a, a RACP grant, as it referred to, uh, for their wellness center and was approved for a million dollars. And so now, uh, those, that paperwork moves forward. So what I have today, and the county is in the same position being the, uh, the applicant for that and the pass through for those funds and so on. So I received, uh, from Wellspan, um, two things that, that need your approval to keep this grant moving forward. The first one being, uh, a state of compliance, which essentially says that Lebanon County is aware of and agrees to abide by competitive bidding requirements, uh, the prevailing wage act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, fidelity bonds, workers' comp insurance and so on. So it's a standard compliance document.
Do I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to apply for, facilitate the Wellspan R A C P grant.
This would be, this would be to approve the statement of compliance.
Statement of compliance, okay.
For the redevelopment assistance capital program.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to agree to the statement of compliance for the Wellspan, uh, grant application. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
And then the second is a cooperation agreement between Lebanon County, um, and the, and Wellspan Good Samaritan, essentially that we will work hand in hand. This is the exact same agreement that was just approved a few weeks ago between the county and Phil Haven, same, I'm dealing with the same person, Nancy Newton.
The one million dollars or?
Well, the numbers, the numbers are, the other was seven hundred and fifty thousand, this is a million, but the, saying the contract, I don't really even need solicitor approval because it's the exact same wording, but the number, so.
I see.
Well, he already, he approved the Phil Haven grant, so the wording's the same, he's aware of.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to, uh, serve as facilitator for that billion dollar grant. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Anything else, Jamie? Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Or adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to those of you that were tough and hung in there.